All right, we will now call the special meeting of the Board of Trustees. We'll call this meeting to order. We're going to start with the roll call by our clerk.
Thank you, President Taylor. John Mayer.
Here.
Diane Nicolette, absent. Howard Rosenberg.
Here.
Lisa Roggerio.
Present.
Angela Taylor.
I am here.
Student Representative Kyle Hood is not here. I'm Veronica Frankel, clerk. We have a quorum.
All right, fantastic. Next on the agenda is the Pledge of Allegiance. Let's say, now I'll pick on our Chief of Staff to lead us in the pledge, if you would, sir.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Chief of Staff. I do have one public comment card, and we'll take this. This is Carol Evans. Carol is here. Carol, come on up. You're going to have three minutes, and there's a little clock right up there. Welcome, and thank you for coming.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Superintendent Davis, President Taylor, trustees, and my fellow citizens. I'm rather surprised that I don't have more people from District C here. I came early to get a good parking space.[85.22][85.22](Laughter). My name is Carol Evans. I'm a 16-year resident of Spanish Springs, which is one of the communities, as you know, in District C. And I'm here today as a concerned citizen and taxpayer to listen and learn about the process for replacing the trustee vacancy. My opinion is that the temporary trustee vacancy should be filled by the board's direct appointment instead of an involved hiring process. And I had to read the agenda several times because both statements sounded alike until I realized that one was for a direct appointment, and not knowing what your regulations are as far as bylaws, I wasn't sure. But anyway, conducting an application and interview process is time-consuming and costly, and it would not be the voter's choice, anyway. And I'm sure the voters in District 3 will understand the need for expediency and to appoint someone who is well-qualified as an interim temporary trustee. And I fully realize the Board of Trustees requires a temporary member to ensure a quorum at meetings, and for this reason, I recommend that you appoint a credentialed person and allow the people to decide their choice in November. Thank you.
Thank you, Carol. I don't have any other comment cards, do we? All right, thank you for coming. Then now I will entertain the motion to adopt the agenda.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, it's been moved and seconded that we adopt the agenda. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? The motion is carried, and let the record show that it is unanimous. Okay, agenda item 2.01, discussion and possible action regarding whether to appoint a legally-qualified person before the next general election in November 2016 to fill the vacancy on the Board of Trustees in District C created by the resignation of former trustee Nick Smith that became effective on April 1st, 2016. This is for discussion and possible action, and the presenters actually will be our chief legal counsel for the district and our chief of staff. Gentlemen, the floor is yours.
Hi.
Hi.
Good afternoon. Really, it's up to you if you want to appoint or not, and the process that you want to choose. Right now, the determination is whether or not you want to appoint. The statute is discretionary. There's 386.270 on whether you appoint. Now, how you appoint is somewhat more mandatory. It talks about how you have to be in an open meeting and that process. So, really, that's all I have for you.
You have something to add, Chief of Staff?
Yeah, and just for clarity for those in the public, David Lasik, for the record, Chief of Staff, the first agenda item that we're discussing, 2.01, is whether or not you want to go forward with appointing somebody. And then the second agenda item, 2.02, is if yes, then what is the process? So I just want to provide that clarification for any members of the public.
Thank you. And if you will, Chief of Staff, I mean, Chief Legal Counsel, will you take us through a little bit? I know there are some rules and regulations around how long this person would serve, and then if they're mandatory, there'd be a general election, if you would.
Right. So the clerk's office from Washoe County has indicated that because of the timing of this, that the person can be elected at the next general election, which is November. There will be a five-week filing period, and all people who file will get on the general election. So it could be one or 100. I mean, I don't know the answer to that. So it'll be kind of an interesting November. So that's the rules.
Okay.
Mr. Trustee Rosenberg?
I'm a little thick as well, no? That means that they're going to open a filing?
Yes.
For this particular situation?
For this.
Okay. Thank you.
And that happens in June and goes through July.
Fine.
Yeah, my understanding is this is something that they have the secondary, which is most recent, that was just recently established by the legislature. It's a secondary filing period for situations such as this.
That's right.
That will happen after the primary, so there won't be the narrowing down, but it can occur as well in November. You know, should we, no matter what, that will happen.
Fine.
And again, just to clarify more for the public, that regardless of whether we do choose to appoint or the process we use to appoint, that election will happen?
Oh, yes.
Okay.
That's mandatory, yes. And that's also in the statute that I was talking about earlier.
Can you trust me?
And that filing period is five weeks?
Yes.
Instead of three or two, whatever the...
It's normally two weeks, and it's normally in March, if I recall.
Yeah.
I believe it's June, it's like June 20th through July 22nd or something like that. It's a pretty extensive...
It's a long time.
It is. It's a long time for people to decide to file.
But it's time for me to move.
It's, again, a pretty extended period of time, but that's statutory, you know, as well. Other comments, questions, the pleasure of the board? No matter what happens to voters, we'll be able to speak in November, yes.
It seems to me we have two problems. If we appoint, that takes care of one of the problems instantly, but if anyone else were to resign, then we're in a pickle, I think. By the same token, if we don't, then we're in a situation where there's only six of us, and that can make things difficult in case of ties and things like that.
Mm-hmm.
So I don't...
And can I jump in on that?
Please.
Because that's actually a really good point, because your quorum, your body size remains seven.
Seven.
Even if you have absentees.
Right.
So you always need four, because you're an elected public body to pass any action. So if you get down to five people, or you get down to four people, you have a quorum, but then you have to have a unanimous vote of those four to do anything. So that is, I mean, that's something to think about.
Yeah, I think that's definitely a consideration, and it's an important one. The other thing, you know, I'm kind of going back and forth, pros and cons of this, and I think I'm inclined to say we should appoint for no other reason except, my primary reason is so that the folks in District C have their second representative on the board. So that's kind of what I'm thinking about, is the representation aspect of this.
For myself, I, again, first and foremost, even though you cover that district and a little bit of District C, District G covers that, which would be, which is trustee Nicolette who's traveling today, but the bulk of that representation, just because it's smaller, does come from the trustee in District C. So that's first and foremost. And then secondarily, for me, is what Chief Legal Counsel, Rombardo, talked about was voting, no matter what we need to have for. And we know we're going into the summertime, and people take vacations and whatnot, and things happen. And, you know, of course, in the event that we have a tie, we want to be able to conduct our business. Those are my thoughts, anyway.
I will apologize in advance. Mr. Rombardo, what would you suggest we do?
Oh.
Do you have a recommendation?
Yeah, I do, sure, if you're going to put me on the spot like that. First of all...
That's why I apologized.
Let the record show that there was an apology in advance.
Yeah, well, I noted the apology. I'll talk to them about that afterwards.[558.66][558.66](Laughter). So, you know what? I did fail to mention one thing, which is that it should be noted, this member will take office once elected, or this member will keep their office until January, I think it's second or third, whatever.
Right.
Okay, just so we're clear, it doesn't, they don't, the election doesn't end this person's position, so they'll be in office for six months. I think it's in the best interest, my recommendation would be to probably appoint somebody, but my recommendation would be to do it in an expeditious fashion as the member, as the citizen indicated in public comment. That's my opinion. That's all that is, though, it's nothing more.
Other comments from the board? Trustee Roggerio, see you later on?
Um, no, I'm ready to make a motion that we move forward with the appointment process.
Is that a motion?
I move that the Board of Trustees, I move that the Board of Trustees approves, oh, wait, that's the wrong one, sorry. I move that the Board of Trustees decides to appoint a legally-qualified person before the next general election to fill the vacancy on the board in District C for the remainder of 2016.
Second.
There is movement seconded, there is discussion? Trustee Mayor?
Under discussion. By which, what method should we appoint?
That's the next agenda item.
Next agenda item?
Yes.
Okay, is there any other discussion on the first agenda item that we take the action to appoint?
No.
Seeing no further discussion, and do I need public comment at this point as well?
Always helps to ask if you want.
Is there any additional public comment at this time? Seeing none, then we will call for the vote. All votes in favor of making an appointment to fill the vacant position in District C, please indicate it by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposition? The motion carries, and let the record show that it is unanimous. Did you vote, Trustee?
No, I wanted to abstain.
Went to abstain, so let the record show then that it is four to one, four to zero to one. Trustee Rombardo? I mean, Chief of Staff.
Thank you.
Chief Legal, Neil?
Yeah, Neil's good. Let's just go with that.
Neil?
Yeah, I like Neil. Neil's better.
It's been a long day.
Yeah, the other guy's my dad, Mr. Rombardo.
Yeah, okay.[691.12][691.12](Laughter).
So, as elected officials, you can only abstain for certain reasons, and this probably isn't one unless you have a conflict, and so your vote would just go down as a no vote. If you're okay with that, that's fine, but that's just what the new statutes indicate.
Okay, I'll go with yes.
Okay.
Okay, then let the record show that it is unanimous. All right, agenda item 2.02, this is now discussion.
Yeah.
By the board and consideration of possible action to adopt a process for appointment of a legally-qualified person to fill the vacancy on the Board of Trustees in District C created by the resignation of former trustee Nick Smith effective April 1st, 2016, including the materials for making application and potential timeline, public notice, a list of appropriate questions for candidates, and any other matters properly relating thereto. This is, this too is for discussion and possible action, and once again, gentlemen, the floor is yours. We'll begin with you now, Chief of Staff.
Right, well, now that you have made the decision to appoint somebody, we need agreement on the process. So there's really two ways to do this. The most efficient and quick way to do it is, as the member of the public pointed out, and I think Mr. Rombardo has pointed out, in statute, you are only required to appoint somebody. So how that happens, if we go above and beyond that and do a solicitation of applications and all of that, is above and beyond what is legally required to do. Now, that's certainly your prerogative, and we are here to assist with whatever decision is made, but there's really two ways to go. Appoint somebody, and that happens in a meeting that's noticed for two weeks in the RGJ, or we go through a formal process where we solicit applications and do all of that, that process which we had done with trustee Nicolette.
And I think the thing that, and I see you, Trustee Frankel, the thing to note is that regardless, there is a two-week public period, period where the public has to be notified within the two-week period of time, for a two-week period of time, that an appointment will take place. Am I correct?
Correct. So when you are making, no matter what process we do, one is longer than the other, but yes, whatever meeting you decide to appoint somebody to this seat has to be noticed, legally noticed in the legal section of the RGJ. Now, I will say, whoever, whenever we're considering somebody for this, or considering multiple people for this, we do also have to list them on the agenda, and sometimes that requires, well, that, not sometimes, it does require notice of them, and it requires them, depending on the timeline, to waive their rights, and that's more your area than mine.
Right, sure.
So one of the things that the Chief of Staff and I have been talking about is, if you choose the quicker method, which would be this once a week for two weeks, what we would have to do is if you, if an applicant submits their application, we would indicate that that, by submitting your application, you're waiving your notice under NRS 241. I think that's, I'm very comfortable with that. I think the other thing that we could do, and, right, it makes it quicker, and I think the other thing that we can do is say, hey, you have to get your application in, although we're noticing the public that it's once a week for two weeks, and it's on this day, you have to get your application in by, let's just say, we would need to do the timing on this, the Friday before, you know, so that we have time to get it on the agenda. So we could do all of that in the notice, and we could cover all of these issues if you choose the faster method. It would be a big notice, but we could definitely handle that situation. So we were just talking about that. If not, we already have the paperwork that we used last time for the appointment of trustee Nicolette, and we could just basically, I could just, well, the two of us could just recreate that.
Trustee Roggerio?
Mr. Rombardo, what do you recommend? I mean, do you, what's your legal opinion? Do you see...
That's a little tougher one now.
Yes, it is.
I saw some legal benefits to the other, you know, legally, I could, I will say, I'm going to hate to do this to you, I'm going to remain neutral and just say I can make it work both ways legally for the board. So whatever way you all choose, we could make it work.
And could you, one more time, define the difference between the fast-paced method and the traditional method?
Sure.
Just quickly, so I can make sure I'm clear on the difference?
Sure. So the, you want, okay, so the slower method, if you will, is what we did last time. So it's two weeks to take in applications, two weeks to do the notice for the meeting, then the entire interview process, and one dedicated meeting for that process. I would think the quicker method would be, we do the larger notice that we just discussed, that goes in the paper for once a week, for two weeks. We go to the meeting, we'll ask for the applications early, obviously, so that you'll have a few days to review it, so we can get their names on the agenda, but you're not going to have as much time to review and find out about these people. I mean, that's just, that's what happens when you move quick, and then a vote will go down right there at that, at that time. So there won't be the in-between meeting where they came and gave three minutes of comment and introduced themselves, and then came to a second meeting and were actually interviewed. That would be truncated, or removed, actually, would be the better word, and then we would just go right to a vote.
So it would be, so the trustees would have to read the applicant, wouldn't have as much time on the applications, which I think that, you know, that I can, I don't see that in any way harming, yes.
You would still have the four days to review applications, because we have to post all of that as reference material.
Okay.
So just keep that in mind.
At a minimum, four days.
We'd have a minimum of four days. We would still have the opportunity to interview the candidates rather than ranking them at one meeting, waiting two weeks or a time period, and then having them come back for the interview. We'd be skipping that process. Okay. Am I missing anything else? No? Okay.
Trustee Frank?
Again, I'm also trying to clarify as well, so thank you for the options. So if I'm hearing you correctly, then we could use the same application questions. We would just receive them in a more expedited way while we're simultaneously, the applicants are submitting those, while simultaneously, this is posted twice in the legal section of the RGJ. So then we would have that meeting posted, at which time we could do, well, I'm wondering if, can we keep it so that if we end up with 15 applications, do we want to interview all 15 people? That's the only risk that we take if we do that. So I'm wondering if we do end up with 15 people, can we do, I mean, it'll be a long day, but can we shorten the list and then interview all 15, come prepared to be interviewed, and we do it in a two-step process the same day? Does that make sense?
You could, and you're also not required to interview.
Right.
Them, so it could just be a five-minute presentation from each person if you have 15 minutes, or 15 people apply.
That's true.
So each person could be limited to five minutes of why I want to be a trustee and whatever questions or whatever statements you want them to make. So that is, again, up to you.
Mr. Rombardo?
And I'm just throwing out more options, because David's absolutely correct. Another option could be as simple as, we're going to take a preliminary vote on that day, and we're going to reduce it from 15 to five, or, and then we're going to only interview five. You can do that, too. I mean, you can have multiple agenda items on there, so we can give you plenty of options. We just need your guidance on what you're looking, you know, and that's why we're talking about this, so we can get it right for you.
Just a preliminary thought for me is I would really want to keep the integrity of the process that we've been using in the past, but I'd be willing to fast-track it a little bit, as you described. I think that still keeps the integrity of the process, because I think part of this process is the vetting process, and I like the fact that we took the time to rank and narrow down the candidates, and then took the time to interview them. I think I would be willing to give my time up to do that in one meeting if we had, had to do that.
Sure.
You know, as a trustee, I think I could, I will make the time to do that, if that will fast-track it, but it still, in my mind, leaves the integrity of the vetting process which intact, which would be my concern, that's my number-one concern, is that we use the same fair process with integrity.
Let me, thank you for that. Let me ask this. I know you've been looking at our calendars.
We're just...
Okay, what, because that will dictate a lot based upon the availability. We know we have finals coming at the university, and people have work obligations and so on, so what do you have in terms of availability for the trustees? Don't shake your head, that means nothing, because that's the wrong answer.
It's tough.
Okay.
And so we might need you to reprioritize some things, as trustee Roggerio said, and make it a priority. No one day, when we looked at your calendars, panned out for all six of you. So there are some days where we could get four, and maybe we look at those days and see if those who didn't respond on that day could do it.
I mean, would we, I am with all here in terms of, in making the, now that we've made the decision to make the appointment, let's balance it and do, the integrity of the process has worked, but let's expedite it, let's condense that as much as we can without losing the integrity, without being unfair to the applicants, and so on, so is perhaps, I know you're in the middle...
Could we use a Saturday? Is that possible?
I'm willing to use a Saturday.
Me, too.
If that's what it takes.
Gladly, because I don't have the kids to worry about.
I have to.
John?
But that Saturday doesn't work. Would the, because the applications stop on a Friday, so if you did it a Saturday, it'd have to be the next week.
The applications can stop whenever we decide, so probably...
Well, I thought you had to have two weeks for applications.
Right, we could literally post it, well, I guess I kind of get it, let's pretend, I could get it in the RGJ tomorrow.
Yeah.
Which you can't, but if we could, yeah, we don't want you to move that.
Okay.
This is hypothetically, maybe not a good hypothetical, but the point is, is if you did it Friday and then Wednesday of next week, that actually meets the statute's qualifications. It's just once a week in two consecutive weeks. It's a weird statute, so you could actually hold your meeting, you know...
So you could...
So the soonest we could hold a meeting would be May 9th.
Yeah.
What day is that?
It's a Monday.
It's a Monday.
Monday, May 9th.
We couldn't hold it on May 7th?
Oh, sorry, yes, we could.
I mean, just, I'm just saying...
If you were doing it Saturday, yes.
That's N A S P.
But you have to post it in a publication once a week for two weeks, and so that's handled that. So actually, it's really a one-week time period, you know, because you do it one there, one there, and then you close it at the same time as you announce it? Are you going to wait until...
Well, that's up to you, what I wait till, but what I would say is that it could be very, the time period could be shrunk like that, but you have to remember, we also have the three days for notice on the open meeting law, so it's really a good, solid two weeks. And so I agree with the Chief of Staff that, I guess arguably, the 7th would be the earliest we could do it.
I would also like to just throw out, we, being May 9th is a Monday, we do have a regular scheduled board meeting on Tuesday, the 10th, so I don't know if everybody's here for that or not.
Well, if we did it on Tuesday, the 10th, to keep, do those two consecutive weeks, as you said, we'd have to do that during the day, because that night, we have Safe and Healthy Schools Forum at 6 o'clock, and we certainly want to be a part of that if we can. And last time, we made a point to try to do it in the evening. Now, we have to give something up in that, and that might be the thing that we give up with enough notice, and perhaps when we notice and invite people to apply in that time, we say that the screening process, or whatever the next meeting will be, on that date at this time, you know, for an example, to give people as much notice as we could to be able to make that and balancing it, because it looks like our calendars are kind of crazy, and that might be the opportunity that we have to do it. Other comments? I mean, it gets away from something we did last time, was do it in the evening time, but it, again, under the circumstances, we may have to give that up.
Yes.
Well, if we do it on a Saturday, the 7th is what you said?
I did not say the 7th.
No, you said...
To be clear, I'm not advocating for a Saturday.
When he, when he suggested...
N A S P is me.
What is?
N A S P.
State Association.
The State Association.
Our State Association.
Yeah, on the 7th.
Student, you know, the school boards.
Is it all day, or is it half-day?
I have it as all day.
Okay. It's on my calendar, I just don't know the end time.
I'm going to take us back to May 10th, because we're all here.
Yeah.
And so we can come in a little earlier, but, I mean, we are all here. I say we go from May 10th. We can even adjust the board meeting maybe to start a little earlier, and maybe we interview the applicants at 3:00 and 4:00, 3:00 and 4:00 before the safety forum, so I...
Or we go the other way around. We do that first and still have the board meeting start at 2:00.
Yes.
Either way it goes, it may be coming in at 11:00 or 12:00.
We would do our best to probably keep that agenda light, so we could do the interviews first and then do the regular stuff after, you know.
So we could rank an interview on May 10th.
Yes.
So if we did something like, if we did, if we were to do something like that, then are we considering, then are we considering one meeting to screen down if necessary and also to interview? No, I'm, no, I'm, right, that's what I'm talking about, one meeting to do both of those, whatever that might, might mean?
And, you know, and work with our communications team and our media partners to explain the importance of this being timely and, you know, why, although we're keeping the integrity of the process, going through the vetting process of ranking them, going through the interview process, we're fast-tracking the timing of it, because it's important to move forward and get someone, to make sure the citizens are represented.
Thank...
May I ask a question? And I understand, it appears that you, it appears to me that you're leaning towards doing the screening and the voting, which I, which we definitely can do. What I would ask, so that we don't appear arbitrary and capricious at the meeting, is that we have numbers laid out. We're only going to interview two, three, four, five, whatever that is when you make your motion.
Right.
The other thing that I would ask is, questions. If you want to do the interview process, last time we allowed you to submit questions, would you all agree to use the same questions as last time?
Yes.
Or do you want to use different questions, or, so that's something we needed, we need we need, we need help knowing from you.
Okay, well, 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 once we decide on how we'll do this piece, we'll discuss the question piece because I see different disagreement. Trustee Mayor?
You know, if you're going to do it on the tenth, uh, let everybody have five minute interview and then we vote on whichever one we, we'll take a vote right there without more interviews.
We can, we can, so without having an interview, have people make a five minute presentation?
Have an interview of everyone, five minute. They could say there's, I'm John Mayor for a statement. And then by the statement and our vetting that we're going to do, then we go in and we nominate somebody and see, uh, the vote and take the vote right there out of the number that are there.
Okay, feedback on that. One, one thing I would say, if we, if we tighten that up in that manner, just to allow the time for, um, to allow the time for the appropriate vetting because those things will become, and then they give the public an opportunity to, to, to weigh in, to send comments, recommendations, whatever, as they do. If we opened, if we got this open, say, the twenty fifth, Monday, um, because it can't happen by tomorrow, then certainly it would appear on Monday, the twenty fifth. That's one week and then it would appear on Monday, the second, right? That would be, you guys have a, you're just getting a calendar, are you good? Okay, so if it was in there Monday, the twenty fifth, and then if it were in there also Monday, the second, could we have a deadline to be on the fourth because then the, it would be published?
Before that, actually.
I mean, what I guess people, ten days.
We would need it on the third, actually, because then we would need to get everything together for posting on Thursday by nine, by nine a.m.
Oh, okay.
So we would need to make the deadline Tuesday.
I mean, maybe in that way we give them, and that might be that's, that, and so that we give them a little bit over a week, eight days or so. I mean, it isn't as, the two weeks as we did last time.
No, but it's okay.
But I think it's important because we're going to condense that process. It gives the public more of an opportunity to, uh, see who the applicants are and to, you know, we got plenty of, of calls and emails and so on with recommendations and, and it gives the public a lot of opportunity to weigh in on that because they won't have as much on the other end and maybe that's the, the trade off, if you will.
Would, would you suggest that we make a motion to that effect first and then move to the next piece or do it all together?
You want me to do it? Okay. Um, I don't care, whatever you're comfortable with, quite frankly, but I just, we just need everything answered so that we can carry out what you desire.
I just don't know if sometimes it's easier with these kinds of processes.
Yeah, and if you find it that way, that's fine.
There's one thing before we make a motion and maybe this is a separate motion, what you're alluding to. I think we, what we need to tighten up in the nomination process and the voting process, um, is tradition, like in the officer, so if you're nominated for clerk, you know, and then are there other nominations for clerk before a vote is taken place? I think there was confusion at the last meeting about that. So it'd be good to work that out here before we go into that meeting. Um, you can do it that way or the way you did it in the last meeting, which is just I nominate so and so and take a vote on that person. So that might be a secondary motion after we agree on the process, but it would be good to clarify that.
Okay, trustee Rosenberg?
Let me try it. I move that we adopt the truncated version that maintains the integrity of the process and that we do this as quickly as possible.
Is that specific enough?
That, that's specific enough if you're going to help us with information regarding how many you're going to, so that's the first motion under this item. That's, I'm, that's fine, yeah.
But you want another motion after?
Yes, we're going to need probably a few more.
So to make this to get the specif, best specificity that you like?
Right. So we're narrowed down to, we're going to do the truncated if you all vote yes.
And, and the truncated, should that pass, just for clarity, the truncated version would be it's posted on the twenty fifth, it's posted again on the second, the closing date is the third.
Right.
And the meeting to appoint would be May tenth.
And the meeting to appoint would be May tenth. That's, that's what this, that's the truncated version that we're all considering.
And let me, may I just make one comment? I apologize for keep doing this, but the April twenty fifth, I will write the notice tomorrow. I'm sure the chief of staff will get it to the RGJ. They may not print it exactly on the twenty fifth. They might, they might need it a couple of days ahead of time. I don't know their rules, do you know, do you know?
Yeah, they're, they're pretty good.
Oh, okay.
As long as we get it in the morning tomorrow, um, we'll have it by Monday.
Okay, oh, never.
Okay, so it's, because it does need to print for, it has to be posted for two weeks. Not when we get it to them, it's when it's posted, so.
I know, but as long as, it's a weird statute, as long as we get it next week and the following week, we're good to go.
Right, you got it, okay. That's right, because it even could be a different week, different day during the week, okay.
Right, that's what I mean.
And, and you have a point of clarification?
I was just going to suggest that if we wanted to set a date on that, it would be the date we send it to the RGJ rather than the date they post it.
Well, yeah, the, the law says it has to be posted one day a week for two consecutive weeks, so he comes up with that. So from a review standpoint, then, the, the, just for the, the, the motion that trustee Rosenberg, um, suggested and it was seconded, am I correct?
Was not.
It was not seconded, so is there a second? We're discussing, we should have a second. There is a second. We should have a second first, excuse me, for that. So the motion would be that we would adopt the truncated process, which would mean that it would be, uh, it, the, the, the legal announcement will appear in the paper next week and then it will appeal, appear in the paper again on Monday, the second. The closing date would be Tuesday, the third, and the meeting to make the selection would be on May tenth.
So that gives us seven days to vet it.
Yes.
Perfect.
Is there any other discussion? Any public comment on this before we, before you take this? None being seen? Okay, all those in favor, is this a public comment? You, you can.
I'm not.
Oh, that's okay. Come on up, come on up. Just keep it right there to legal, yeah.
I, oh, oh.
Sorry.
Because, would you, would you mind? Hang, hang on just a second, let me give you the formal introduction. Thank you for coming, it's okay when, you can just, it's all right, we want to hear from you, so thank you for being here. Just for the record, this is, um, Diana?
Daria.
Daria, so Daria Scott.
Yes.
Okay, thank you for being here, you have three minutes, Daria.
Okay. Um, I just, I, I'm not sure if it pertains to one of these, but one of the things that was addressed in the, um, Reno Gazette Journal article was that the board may want to appoint somebody that wouldn't be running for the position in the fall. So my question is, I don't know if that, that actually goes with any of this information or if it's even legally possible for you to be able to block an appointee from running in the election.
What we will do, we don't typically respond to, to, uh, public comment because we don't get, but however, I do think it's appropriate, this is get from our, from our legal counsel to, to respond to that.
I was going to say, I mean, really, the question is to him.
Yeah, no, it's okay, we can all share in this.
Yeah. So no, uh, you can't, I, you can't put a legal requirement that they don't run, but you can, because there's requirements in the statute that say this, these people can be appointed and you have to consider all people who meet those qualifications. Now you as interviewees, if you decide that's an important issue to you, that they either are running or aren't running, then you can consider that as you pa, cast your vote for the candidate.
I will just point out, because we're appointing on May tenth, we won't even know because the filing period is not till June twentieth.
Right.
So we, we won't know what you're talking about.
And so legally, you can't put any caveat on that saying.
We really can't.
Okay.
No, and that, and that's it for, again, the reason we're engaging in the dialogue is because that has come up before. And even though if we said we want to, uh, appoint David and, and, and we, because David said he isn't going to run, and then June, you know, twenty ninth comes around and David says, I kind of like this, I think I'm going to throw my, there's nothing we can do.
Okay, I just wanted to clarify that. I'm a member of the district as well, so I wanted to get a good idea of what the process and our representation would be.
That's a great question, thank you for being here. Uh, is there any other discussion? Hearing none, I will call for the question. All those in favor of adopting the truncated version of, of the search as we have, um, as we have discussed, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, the motion carries, you're good, trustee mayor?
Yeah.
You're, okay, all right, the motion carries, let the record show it is unanimous.
Would you like us to guide you through the?
No, I'm just, I'm going to turn it over to you so we can, we want to get you the information you need.
Right, so David, the chief of staff and I were just talking, we think the next thing that to consider is, if you would, is screening. So if you get too many applicants, how mu, do you want to reduce them? How do you want to reduce them? Do you not want to reduce them and just do the five minute? So we, we just need some help with how you want to do that.
Trustee Mayor?
Uh, I move that, uh, we, uh, have a five minute statement by each candidate on, uh, May tenth, followed by a vote for the one to be appointed through, uh, December.
Okay, is there, is there a second and then we'll have discussion if there is a second?
Second.
Okay, let's just discuss. I mean, there, there are others, other discussion on having a five minute, um, uh, statement that each applicant would be able to have and then we would make our decision based upon the, uh, the feedback we got from the community, the application packets that they sent in, in addition to their five minute statements. Trustee Frank?
Part of me, and, you know, it, it's, the process is going to be slightly different because it's possible, the questions will be, that's a different story. There's a part of me that wants the opportunity to actually ask the individuals the same set of questions as we did before, just because again, it maintains the integrity and the consistency in the processes that we used. I'm not saying yet how many we would want to bring the number down to that we actually go through that process with. And so I, I would want to keep that as a fairly small number and I may be going to suggest that we, if we have more than three people who apply, we whittle it down to three first and then we interview those final three people, um, as, as an example. Or we can save five since we did five the last time, so maybe I'll stick with, I'll say that number. So I'm more comfortable ass, having the opportunity to ask questions, whatever those questions end up being, whether they're the same ones or not. So that's a number, that's a different issue to discuss. So I'm inclined to not feel comfortable with just a five minute statement from them because I think asking them questions is important.
Okay, other, other comments?
Um, I, I'm inclined to keep the same exact process, but just fast tracked. So I think we should narrow it down to, uh.
We did five last time.
Five, five applicants. I think we should resubmit new questions to our chief of staff and I think we should hold the interviews like we did last time for the top five. That's what, I, I just think it keeps integrity to the vetting process.
Trustee Rosenberg first and then trustee mayor?
I'm okay.
You're okay, okay, trustee mayor?
Um, then I suggest we, uh, have the meeting at another date rather than one that we have the meeting on. That's going to stretch that out a long time because, uh, you're going to listen to fifteen five minute speeches, then you want to we, narrow it down to, let's say, five? That's going to take a while.
I wasn't going to listen to five minute speeches.
Pardon?
I wasn't recommending we did five minute speeches.
Well, even three, so you have fifteen and then you have an, well, we'll do, never mind, but it's, uh, you're having it with a regular meeting and it's, you know, I think a little much, but.
The, the only concern I have in, in, in doing them at the same time is we just don't know how many applicants we're dealing with yet. And that would, if we have a smaller group, whatever that might mean, doing it in a couple of hours before the meeting is one thing. If we have twelve, fifteen people, that would be more difficult. Trustee Rosenberg?
We can arrange the times. Let's say we have only five applicants. It can happen, we're fine. If there's more than that, we can make arrangements la, we later on, make another date if we need to do that.
No, you've already voted to do it on the tenth. I mean, you have to rescind your motion.
We have to rescind it.
I think you're creating a lot of work for yourself. My suggestion would be that you could bifurcate the meeting on the tenth in the morning, you can consider your regular business in the afternoon, you consider this. The first agenda item in the afternoon would be reduce the number of applicants to five. I, I would write it, obviously, my, we would write it much nicer than that, but I'm just, you get my point. Then you reduce it down to five, then the second agenda item is, here's the five, let's interview them. That, if, if that's the way you choose to go, I don't, I don't know, but I'm, that's what I'm suggesting, how you do that. So you would just take a immediate vote to go from fifteen to five and then go from there.
Well, well, one of the things that we, that we could also do is, is I should say, adjust the time. If we have a larger number of applicants, we have, have to make sure we're available to be able to start earlier in the day. And if that means we start at nine o'clock or ten o'clock because we have a lot of applicants, then, then we, we do it that way and that way we can, you know, stick to the day and then do it in that, that same, and then we can, we'll, we'll discuss whether or there are the regular meeting or how, how we do that, that way, but we could do it that way, yes.
I, to the sake of just clarity, more than anything else, I'll withdraw my second on the motion. Mr. Mayor, would you withdraw your motion?
I don't know. We already voted on the motion.
No, we haven't voted on yours.
Okay.
It was just.
I'll withdraw.
Okay, so why don't, if, if, at, at this point, to, to say exactly what time would be, would, would, would be inappropriate based upon the, because we don't know how many applicants we're going to get. Um, but what we can do is say, is certainly stick to the tenth and that we will do a, we will come in, we will, we will screen it down to five and then those are the five that we would interview.
Does that a motion?
No, no, I, I'm not going to make them, I'm just trying to get clarity on the discussion so we can see. Trustee Rose, I'm here, Rogerio?
I, I move the process that we use on May tenth is similar, similar to the process that we used in the past, that, uh, we narrow down the candidates to a, a number of no more than five.
Okay.
And then we conduct interviews with the candidates with questions that are submitted prior to the chief of staff by the trustees.
And, okay, there's a second, and I would just say from a clarity standpoint, I remember this from before, legal counsel was uncomfortable with no more than five, he wanted a specific number, or he, or he thought we could be, um, arbitrary, we could be accused of being arbitrary and capricious.
Less than five applicants.
If I remember.
Yeah, I, I, you're, you're right, that is a concern, but in this circumstance, she said no more than five and I think what she was getting at is we might only get two applicants.
Oh, okay.
So.
Okay, gotcha.
So if it's less than five, we just go with that, but if it hits the number five?
Then we go with five.
We go with five, if it goes over five, we're still at five.
Okay. Any other discussion? Uh, trustee, trustee mayor? You can fill out the comment.
That, um, that leaves out the, uh, five minute, uh, statement then.
Anybody can make public comment for three minutes.
And that's what we had last time was.
It wasn't a five minute statement.
It was, it was three minutes of public comment that they provided.
So that is always available, wouldn't be, it wouldn't be an orchestrated five minute statement then of what you're saying. Trustee Franklin, you wanted to comment on that?
That was what I was going to say.
Okay, all right. We do have public comments, okay. You can fill the card out later, we want to give you a chance to, to turn it, uh, can, help him.
It'll take care of itself, okay.
Okay.
I think, well.
Give, give us your name just for the record.
Oh, Helm Lehman, um, in District C. And, um, I just want to get a point of clarification. So if there are more than five applicants and you vet them down to five, will all applicants have an opportunity to make public comment before the vetting process?
Again, public comment is open to, to everyone, that's a, that's a fair question again, this, this, public comment's open for everyone.
Okay.
Helm, so that would absolutely be available.
Okay, so each applicant would have an opportunity to address the board prior to the?
They have that, that, that three minute public comment you bet they would.
All right, all right, thank you.
Very fair question, mhm. If you would, you'll get that, get the card to, uh, chief legal when you're all taken care of. Other commentary, seeing no other, uh, public comment, then I will entertain, um, we take, we take a vote, we have a motion, the motion on the floor is that we move forward in a similar fashion that we did before, the, the primary difference being that we do, we conduct both the screening and the interviewing on the same day with up to.
Ranking, the ranking.
The rank, the ranking, um, yeah, okay, the ranking.
Right.
Okay, the ranking, yeah, the, the ranking, we're, we're basically, we narrow it down to up to five, um, and we do the interviewing on the same day that day being May tenth.
Fine.
Okay, all those in favor of the motion signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposition? Everybody's good? Trustee Mayor, you're good? All right, the motion's carried, then let the record show it is unanimous. What, what else do you need from us gentlemen?
Um, the length of the interview.
Thirty minutes?
Okay, so.
I mean, that's what we've done in the past, so we'll stay that same way.
But a motion, please.[1544.04]
Oh, you, we need that to be a motion, okay?
Just a quick question, the number, I'm trying to remember the length of the interviews that we just, were they a half hour?
We tried to make them a half hour, some people went longer.
A couple went a little longer, but I remember, when I went through it, I remember was the, the idea was a 30-minute interview, so, do you need a motion, or we say our intention is 30 minutes, what do we need?
I, I just want to do a motion, let's just lay it out.
Okay, entertain the motion.
I move that we, we have the interviews be of 30 minutes in length, and that, I could combine it, that each of the trustees will submit a question to Chief of Staff, Lasik, for him to...
That wasn't, that wasn't her.
That was already her, never mind.
Yes, okay, I'll second.
Okay, any, any further discussion, 30-minute interviews?
Public comment?
All those in favor of the interviews being limited to a period of 30 minutes, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Opposition? Right, the motion carries, again, let the record show it is unanimous.
I second, oh, sorry.
That, the, the, it was...
I second.
Trustee Rosenberg, gentlemen, is there any other specific direction you need from us?
Last one, as Chief of Staff indicated at the last meeting, I think, I don't know how much confusion there was, but there was just a little, maybe a little bit of confusion about nomination or motion, we had a motion on the floor, I think other trustees thought a nomination process would have been better, both are legal, but we just thought, why don't we pick one, so the nomination process, to be clear, is, somebody says, I nominate Person A, and somebody else says, I nominate Person B, and then you vote on it, and you need four to carry that vote too, okay, and, or the motion process would be, I move to appoint Person A, second, vote, if you don't get four, it doesn't carry, if you do get four, it does carry, it's over, I, again, both processes are totally legal, I just, we just would like to know which one you'd like to use, so that we're prepared to assist.
Okay, question, I didn't have a response for you, go ahead.
Yeah, and I just have a question, so the first example, the nomination process does not require a second, someone can nominate, because you didn't have that in your description, so the nomination process does not require a second, the motion process would require a second and an immediate vote on that motion.
Correct.
Whereas nomination requires one nomination, and then the floor is open for subsequent nominations.
Correct.
I, I do think it's important that we keep the same process, I like the nomination process personally, but I, but I do think that, that one of the things that we've said that we wanted to be committed to, was keeping the same process.
Well, I, I think we've used nomination processes in most of the other prior decisions on these kinds of things, it didn't happen at the last meeting?
It didn't happen on myself either, when I was appointed, and I was a prior appointee, appointee.
I, I believe I watched it also, but it, and it was a nomination process, but I could be wrong.
Because I lived it. No, really, truly, I, I, I mean, I, again, we can, any of us could be wrong, I could be wrong too.
Let's use the ointment process.
No, I just, I just, I just remember, I just remember there being a nomination.
I move that we use a motion process to make that determination.
A motion process.
Is, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion?
I just wanted to...
Okay, any further discussion? Okay, all those in favor that we use a motion process, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Any opposition? Okay, the motion carries, let the record show it is unanimous, so we will do, do it